One, two. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri for Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025. The first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Falkingham.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Homa.
Here.
Councilmember Maddox.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Wiley.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg, a quorum is present.
Thank you. Next item is the approval of the September 9th work session minutes and regular meeting minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Well, I have, I just want to just point out there's one mistake in Part 11H, I believe it is, you have, that I, yeah, 11H, you have a motion to approve by Councilmember Falkingham.
That would have been Homa.
I'm sure it was Homa and Garcia, as it has been the whole time.
Yeah. Okay, that will be changed.
No problem.
Okay, is there any other discussion or corrections? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting minutes have been approved. Item number six is the first of two public comment sections, and I believe we have someone signed up.
Okay, we have Melissa Dirker of Ward Three.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Melissa Dirker, I'm in Ward Three, and I'm going to get my notes. My family is part of the LGBTQ+ community, and I want to share how the recent lowering of the flag for Charlie Kirk affected us. For many queer and trans people, including my family, the fact flag has not always represented safety or belonging. When it was lowered for Charlie Kirk, a figure whose rhetoric has targeted our community, it deepened that sense of exclusion. Just five days later, we held a pre-planned protest for trans rights here in town. I want to thank councilmembers C. and Nick for joining us and express how much that mattered. For our trans youth especially, it was powerful to see their leaders show up for them. That kind of presence told them that they belong here, even in the broader, even if the broader country doesn't always make them feel that way and says the exact opposite. That's why I'm asking for our city to create a clear policy about when the flag is lowered. While I understand the governor issued an order, I don't know what our local policy currently says about how we respond. We can't control what the flag means everywhere, but we can decide what it means here. By reserving this gesture for moments of collective mourning or local service, and by adopting a formal transparent policy, our city can ensure that lowering the flag always sends a message of care and inclusion to all residents. I respectfully ask the council to direct staff to draft that policy or bring forward an ordinance so that this is clear going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, you know, besides having a policy regarding the lowering of the flag, we had talked previously about a policy with regards to what flags are displayed. So I think we need to address that also, so that it's, as you said, clear and transparent as to, so it's not subjective and it's hopefully not dictated by outside forces that might not be in line with our train of thought. So, I believe that our attorney has probably dealt with this previously and might have some ideas on how we can move forward without necessarily incurring the wrath of our state government.
I'll work with Amber and try and, try and develop a policy.
Okay. And the other part that I don't know that you were privy to was, we need to establish a policy on which flags we can fly and when and that, so.
I made a note of that as well.
We'll be glad to provide, you know, input on that. Whether it's 365 flags a year, or 52, or, you know, whatever it is, we want something that communicates what the, what, you know, that's in line with both the city citizens and the city government. Does anyone else want to comment on this particular situation?
I would, I would support the development of a policy that outlines clearly, you know, where Maplewood stands, and I would just encourage us to keep in mind that we wouldn't want to let that policy become something that can prevent us from being equity-minded as well, and so I think something that creates structure for us in times like this, but that also leaves the door open for us to continue growing that policy or continue adding flags to it, and I don't want it to become a blockade to further equity.
Agreed.
Yeah, amen.
Either way, it's going to, it's a good conversation to be having as a city council.
Agreed.
Item, are there any other public comments?
There are no other comments.
Okay. Keep in mind that there's an opportunity at the next, at the end of the session to also make public comment. Item number seven is announcements?
Yeah, we got a couple. This Sunday, there's a community's artisan market at Schlafly's, if you want to start your holiday shopping. We have our Ward Three Community Meeting on Saturday, 10/4 at Greenwood Park, and we have Regional Night Out coming up on Tuesday, the 7th of October.
And also, I would like to wish all the members of the tribe a Happy New Year. Lishna Tuva. And are there any other announcements? Moving on to item number eight, unfinished business, Bill 6291, final reading, amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter 56, Zoning, Section 56-3, Definitions, Section 56-72, Permitted Uses, SR Districts, Section 56-106, Permitted Uses, LR Districts, Section 56-131, Permitted Uses, MR Districts, and Section 56-880, Group Living Facilities, to redefine group homes and allow group homes as permitted uses in residential districts.
Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, just real quick, I just want to thank our attorney for some clarification on that and all the input from P&amp;Z. So, I know I kind of raised the question, and I'm kind of glad we, at least for me anyway, we kind of fleshed it all out, so I think it's fantastic, so.
I agree. Any other discussion? Let's see. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Falkingham.
Yes.
Bill 6291 is approved as Ordinance 6085.
Thank you. The next bill is Bill 6292, final reading, establishing tax rates for the City of Maplewood and the Maplewood Special Business District for 2025.
Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Falkingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Bill 6292 is approved as Ordinance 6086.
The next item is Bill 6293, final reading, amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter 30, Human Relations, Section 30-19, Definitions, to revise the definition of source of income to comply with state law.
Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Again, thank you for clarifying that so that we're not in violation of the law. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Falkingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Bill 6293 is approved as Ordinance 6087.
Next item is Bill 6294, final reading, amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 7, Boards, Commissions, and Authorities, Division 1, Generally, to amend Section 2-361, Boards and Commissions, and add Section 2-362, Rules of Procedure.
Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Falkingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Bill 6294 is approved as Ordinance 6088.
The next item is Bill 6295, its final reading, amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 7, Boards, Commissions, and Authorities, to add Division 5 Police Advisory Board.
Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We, the membership, my understanding, can be either residents, business owners, property owners. Is there, I didn't recall, is there a specific number or requirement?
There are five members, and they can be residents, business owners, or employees of Maplewood-based businesses.
Okay, so all of, any one of them can be any of the categories, but we'll determine that as a council anyway. Any other discussion? Look forward to having this advisory board in place, and I think it'll help our constituents understand in businesses the role of our police department. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Falkingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Bill 6295 is approved as Ordinance 6089.
We'll move on to new business, Resolution 25-42, accepting the bid from Reinhold Electric in the amount of $13,457 for boring and repairing damaged electrical lines to the antique lighting on the 7400 block of Manchester Road.
Motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I understand the duration of the construction is only going to be less than a week?
We hope so.
Okay.
And this damage was from?
We have to bore to figure out where the damage even occurred. It's not clear which street project ultimately damaged the wires.
It would be nice to have that light back.
Gold unknown.
I had a couple of questions on this one. Is Reinhold, do they, do we have a maintenance contract with them, with the city?
They are our contracted vendor for repairs.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I was, I was wondering if they're a union shop, and I did some research, and it's kind of like an interesting in-between where they are not IBEW, but they employ union contractors that are union through the carpenters' union? And so, I know we've had discussions in the past about responsible bidder language, and I think that's worth revisiting potentially, because I don't know with regular responsible bidder language if they would make the cut there. And I'm pro-union and always have been, so I think we, it would be in our best interest to have something like that in the future, so I'm fine approving this, and since we have a standing relationship with them, but I do think it could be worth revisiting for the future to bring the responsible bidder language back to the council.
Do you have a timeline that you'd like to see and discuss that?
No. But we can talk about that moving forward.
All right, I'll make a note.
I know we've, we've had it, I think it's even made it to an agenda in the last couple of years, but I just don't think we took any action on it, so.
No, we haven't.
Any further discussion?
If there is, so we have to do the boring to figure out where the damage occurred?
It's like starting over, I think.
Is there any consequence if a project was accidentally done in such a way that it damaged our existing wiring, that we can recoup anything?
If we're able to prove that.
Okay.
But I don't know that we.
Sure.
Are confident that we're going to be able to determine that.
Okay, thank you.
And what kind of warranty is placed on their work?
On Reinhold's work?
Yeah.
I don't know off the top of my head, but I can certainly report back to you all once we execute the contract.
Essentially, we want to make sure that it doesn't happen again, you know, without outside.
The warranty is right here, it says labor materials for one year from installation date. The warranty does not cover owner-provided materials negligence, intentional misuse, or failure to maintain, so.
And to be clear, we think the damage occurred from another contractor, not from our electrical contractor.
And is it typical that we have so few bidders on these type of projects these days?
It varies. It just depends on their availability and whether they think the work is worth their time. This is a relatively small project, although it rises above our threshold for you to approve. Yeah, lately, we've seen anywhere from two to four for these types of projects.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Falkingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Resolution 2542 is approved.
Thank you. Next item is Resolution 25-43, authorizing purchase of security cameras from GoInInet Incorporated in the amount of $49,479 for facility and security improvements and public safety enhancement.
Motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Sean, would you like to start the conversation?
Not necessarily, I mean, I, you know, I mean, I, I understand why we need them, and there's no, nothing in here that concerns me about privacy or anything like that, so that's always my biggest concern, but, yeah, no, I'm pretty good with this, so.
Okay. That helps, because you're.
Yeah. And the system they're buying is really good too, Rumbus, so, which I'm familiar with.
Does anyone else have any concerns? Are there, are there options to add any additional cameras?
Yes, yeah, so this basically replaces the current system that we have with the new system, and with our anticipated expansion and renovation of City Hall, we would need to add additional cameras to the system. And I'll note that the Calog Park cameras are in addition based on last year's Ward One Community Meeting request from residents.
And we did already budget almost all the money for this. There's this $4,500 extra, and that gets reimbursed by Blue Shield.
Yeah, so the, we already submitted the Blue Shield application for the full $50,000.
Roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Falkingham.
Yes.
Resolution 2543 is approved.
Next item is first and second reading of Bill 6296, amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2, Mayor and Council, Division 2, Code of Ethics, Sections 2-44 through 2-49, and Article 7, Boards, Commissions, and Authorities, Division 4, Code of Ethics, Sections 2-500 and 2-501, to update ethics codes for city council members and board and commission members.
Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I appreciate the work on this. It's obviously needed pretty badly, but it's, I like it, it's very, very clear, and clearly delineates exactly what's going to happen, you know? Obviously, we know from experience that the previous codes were not very, didn't have any teeth to them, so this is great, this is very welcome, so.
Anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading, amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2, Mayor and Council, Division 2, Code of Ethics, Sections 2-44 through 2-49, and Article 7, Boards, Commissions, and Authorities, Division 4, Code of Ethics, Sections 2-500 and 2-501, to update ethics codes for the city council members and board and commission members.
Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill will move on to its third and final reading at the next, next council meeting. Moving on to item number 10, council and staff reports. Mayor's report, I would talk about Ward Two, but that would take away from the Ward Two. It was a very good meeting, and the Ward Three meeting is coming up next, and I'll let Ward Three representatives talk about that. Ward One report?
Yeah, we both hung out with the cool people at the Ward Two meeting, so that was really nice over the weekend. I think it was Councilmember Maddox who had recommended that other wards try and attend some of the meetings, other council people, and that was such a good suggestion, and I really, I'm mad at all of us for not thinking of that sooner, because it was really, really nice and very useful to talk with a lot more people than just the Ward One folks that we see.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
So I'm going to try and make it to Ward Threes also.
Plus, I just felt like safe. Our whole tribe was there. We were representing, you know? Well, nothing, I just, it was great to have company, I don't know, I'm just, thank you, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, it was, it was a good meeting, so thank you for having us. I also wanted to just bring up a couple of things. Today is Bisexual Visibility Day, something that's been celebrated since 1999, and just wanted to let the members of the LGBT community that identifies bisexual know that we celebrate you today and you're seen. I also wanted to wish our Hispanic community a happy Hispanic Heritage Month. I'm sorry we have to have Hispanic Heritage Month. It's a really hard year to be Hispanic, and I just want to remind everybody that, you know, it's, well, it's great to be in a community like Maplewood where we have, you know, events like the Community Unity Center was holding to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, I just want to remind everybody that the fear that this community is experiencing has trickled all the way down into this community. They're experiencing it here in the streets of Richmond, Richmond Heights, Maplewood, and so for those of you watching the stream, we celebrate you today. If you're afraid to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, for those of you that are not Hispanic and don't understand what the community is going through, I just want to remind you that the people in your community are experiencing fear every day right now, so happy Hispanic Heritage Month, and I hope one day we don't need it.
Ward Two.
Well, we had our Ward Two meeting, which was great, thank you to everyone for attending. Thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Kristi Garcia for taking lovely notes, we very much appreciate that. I don't know, what I heard, I'll just say what I heard, and you can add or say I got it wrong, but I, what I heard was that there was some appreciation for some of the public safety work we've been doing down at that end, and I think, but I also heard lots more needed, more resources, and we knew that going in, so I think, you know, it's great to let, let that community say their piece. We, there was enthusiasm and excitement about the lighting study coming, there was definitely some interest in getting some of that done, there's probably some other important things that I'm not thinking of. Parks improvements are very enthusiastically looked forward to.
The, the new sign that was put in on Roseland Terrace with the no trucks.
Oh, yes, yeah. Traffic was, you know.
That traffic was a big one, but I would like to say thank you to my colleagues for showing up on a Saturday morning, thank you to the mayor for coming. As I said there, to the citizens there, this is one Maplewood, and this is how we're going to build on community by getting these people down in Ward Two and the far east side more involved and more resources, yeah, east side, east side. So thank you guys for showing up, and I do think we should all try to make a concerted effort to show up in each ward if we can, just to be a united front.
And quick thanks also to staff team. Donuts were awesome.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Police were there.
Public Works got a huge.
I don't want them to not show up next time, so I'm going to say thank you this time.
Can't forget, Jason got a big shout-out there, they really commended Public Works and the work they do, so.
Yes, they did.
You know, our citizens see how hard our, not only our staff is working, but council is trying to work as well, so our citizens recognize that.
Yeah, most of it.
Can I ask, I'm not sure if this would be appropriate time, but I have a follow-up question from the Ward Two meeting. You know, Barry, you mentioned that at the meeting that, you know, the, the hope is that some of the measures taken for the bus stop are temporary, and I was just wondering, would it be the police department that we would maybe need to ask if, if they have any ideas about what some potential milestones are that we would need to hit in order to potentially bring those things back? I know we've talked about it being temporary, and that's everybody's hope, but I think it might help to have some guidance around, like, what would we like to see before we start considering bringing those resources back?
Great question.
Yep.
I think there's going to be a lot more discussions about the Ward Two issues, but obviously we'll have someone in Ward One and Ward Three. The most profound ones right now are some of the occurrences happening at, at Ward Two, which leads me to, I'm probably stepping on this, city manager's territory, but we do have our new social services coordinator here tonight, and we want to welcome Celeste to the City of Maplewood, and she'll also be working with the City of Richmond Heights, and she'll most likely be joining us in these meetings to, to hear what our citizens have to say and what their concerns are. So, again, welcome.
We're glad you're here.
Welcome, yes, very, very glad, yeah, yeah. Thank you, thank you.
We're technically still in the Ward Two report section of the agenda. I would just make it a full-circle moment by saying, your name was mentioned at the meeting, and again, there's enthusiastic looking forward to having somebody to work with, particularly, I think, connecting you to some of the property managers, and you're going to get to know it all, but yeah, so, hooray.
Moving on to Ward Three.
Top that.
Yeah.
I don't have anything, Nick.
Well, just a reminder, October 4th, 10:00 a.m., Greenwood Park, everyone's invited for the Ward Three meeting. I was, I had it in my calendar to make it to Ward Two, but we had soccer games stacked up, so I apologize I couldn't make it, but yeah, open invite for everybody, come join us.
You didn't come to Ward One either, so.
I know, I, you're right about that. I didn't even have it in my calendar, so.
The first.
Exactly.
But yeah, Greenwood Park, 10 o'clock, October 4th, come join us, just talk, and let us know what you'd like to see if you have complaints, issues, concerns.
Compliments.
Compliments, yeah, we'll take those as well.
Yeah, we do.
Complaints go to Sean, compliments I'll take.
I think there'll be discussion of the Great Rivers Greenway.
Oh, yeah.
In, in particular, because it affects so many people in Ward Three.
I would like to also add that October 4th is the Community Yard Sale Day, so it will probably be a busy day about town that day around town, so it is the Community Yard Sale. You can get a free tag at the Heights, I believe, just go there and give them your address, and they will give you a tag and put your name on the list, and you can sell your goods.
Recycling and reuse is much better than throwing it away. Anything else from Ward Three? City Attorney's report?
No report tonight.
Next item is the City Manager's report.
Well, Mayor, you did seal my thunder a little bit, but thank you for giving a warm welcome to Celeste Greer, our new social services coordinator who started yesterday and very enthusiastically said, of course I'll come to your meeting tonight, it's no problem. Celeste comes to us from the Little Bit Foundation, and prior to that, she was a social worker for the St. Louis Public School System for about 10 years.
for the St. Louis Public School System for about 10 years. Celeste really distinguished herself in the interview process for not just her knowledge and her expertise and her skills, but her problem-solving abilities and her very big heart. She's already hit the ground running, meeting with city staff and with myself and Amy Hamilton, City Manager for Richmond Heights, and we're just really excited to get her moving forward and solving all the problems in Maplewood. I will say that we're, we're holding back a little bit in introducing her to community partners because we've asked her to do some internal infrastructure building and some policy development, so before we share her phone number and her email address with our community, we're going to give her a little bit of time to, to build some infrastructure, infrastructure for the position, but I know she's, she's excited to get started, so welcome, Celeste. In addition, wanted to just put a plug in for the St. Louis County District Five Public Safety Meeting that's happening at MRH High School on October 2nd. We will have public safety staff and myself from the city represented there. This is a discussion with County Executive Page and County Councilmember Clancy to discuss public safety in our district. I also wanted to ask you to pencil in the evening of October 8th if you're available for a kickoff meeting, stakeholder interview process for the city's branding initiative. We've set aside time throughout that day for staff, business owners, residents, and Board and Commission and Council Members to sit with our consultant from Creative Entourage and tell her what you think of Maplewood and what you hope for Maplewood and how Maplewood distinguishes itself from other munis in the region. I will have firm details about that probably tomorrow afternoon to send to you by email, but we will have it in the evening so that it doesn't conflict with your work responsibilities. And finally, our new city attorney has been very kindly monitoring state legislation for us and letting us know when we are in violation of new state laws, so I provided a list in my memo of recommendations that Jim has made for ordinances that are going to need to be updated over the next couple of months, so he and I will work together to get that done and we will also work together to get a flag policy draft to you for a work session and we will also work together to get some responsible bidder language back on the work session agenda in the near future.
Amber, did you have a time on the Public Safety Town Hall?
I do, if I can read my notes without my glasses. It starts at 6:00 PM
Thank you.
at the high school. It's going to be in the theater there.
Thank you.
That's it for my report.
Does the, the changes in the fireworks permit, does that help us enforce the restrictions that we have in place?
No. Sorry.
It'd be nice, it'd be nice if it did.
Yeah, I can look at what restrictions you have in place and see if it weighs in at all, but I don't think it really does as council member.
Yeah, it's more commercial related
Yeah.
than it is.
I know.
You don't approve of celebrating the birth of our country by blowing up a little part of it?
I think there's definitely some safety issues and disturbance issues at play there. Item number 11 is the second of the two public comment sections. Does anyone want to speak? Do we have anyone signed up?
Nobody else.
Okay. I don't believe that we need to hold a closed session, so I'll move on to item number 13, which is entertaining a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.